Good evening. I'm Bob Muscally, currently the Chair of the Falmouth Select Board.
And good evening, Mike Renshaw, Town Manager.
We're happy to be here and appreciate the opportunity that FCTV has afforded us to be able to talk to you, the residents of the town of Falmouth, and recap what has happened at the Select Board meeting that we just finished. Today is October 16th. We had our meeting on October 14th. Normally it would be on a Monday, but we had this meeting on Tuesday because of Indigenous Peoples' Day, so we were one day beyond what our normal situation would be. So, Mike, we had another packed agenda on Tuesday night.
It was a robust agenda, for sure.
It has been very much so ever since I became the Chair. So, we want to just talk about a couple of the things that came up of import, and then we're going to have a break, and we're going to bring on some guests to talk about the sighting of the police station. So normally, our meetings start at 6:30. This particular meeting on October 14th started at 6 o'clock because we went into executive session, and I thought it would be helpful, Mike, to let some of the people know what goes into an executive session determination. You want to give us a little background?
So yeah, just to give a summary, state law allows governing bodies to go into executive session or closed session without audience members present for very specific purposes. At our last meeting, it was involving litigation, personnel matters, matters involving land acquisition, any negotiations that would... A public meeting might compromise those negotiations, but in this specific example, it was for litigation, potential litigation purposes.
Okay, so what happens is we open the meeting, we call to order, we adjourn into executive session, we hold the meeting behind closed doors and discuss sensitive issues, and then we would return, as we did, to regular meeting which started at 6:30.
Yeah, I'd mention real quickly also, Bob, minutes are taken, and those minutes are typically held until Town Council advises they can be released once that sensitivity is no longer an issue.
And unlike most of the... many of the votes, when we're conducting a regular Select Board meeting, when you'll see people raise their hands and say, "I, we actually do roll call votes whenever we're in executive session." So that's another formality that's required. So there were a number of consent agenda items, and as we've dealt with them, they're generally pretty pro-forma, don't require a lot of discussion or debate, and we had a number of matters on that consent agenda. One of the matters that was held was the matter of some testimony that we provided, sorry, to the state legislature with respect to a pending bill that has been sponsored by Representative Viera with respect to refundable tax credit.
That's correct. House Bill 4082, I believe, is the official title.
Okay, and I think that's a very important development. In the past, there is a state program that allows people to claim a tax credit of up to $18,000. They can spread it out over a number of years, and it's a credit against their Massachusetts income tax. But if you don't have an income tax to pay, you effectively don't get the benefit of the tax credit. Now, these are credits with respect to expenses that a homeowner has incurred or with respect to sewer or septic systems. So Representative Viera has sponsored a bill that will make that tax credit an actual, what's referred to as a refundable tax credit, which means even if the homeowner resident doesn't have an income tax liability greater than the credit, he or she will still be able to get actually a credit back, not just a credit against taxes they pay, but an actual payment to compensate them for that cost. So we did submit a letter. It was approved, and I signed the letter and sent it up. We were asked by the Water Quality Control Committee to support this, and we all felt it was a very good idea and very appreciative of Representative Viera's efforts in this regard. The next matter of business had to do with some interviews that we had. Mike, you want to talk a little bit about?
Sure. We had several committee interviews, and as the folks probably know in the community, we have upwards of 50 boards and committees that are appointed. The members are appointed by the Select Board. We had four different sets of interviews on Tuesday night, and oftentimes, the positions, there's more than one candidate for a vacancy. I think we had a couple of instances of that. I think the big message I'd like to deliver to the public, Bob, is the importance of checking out our website periodically. If you're interested, I encourage people. It's a great opportunity to learn how local government works and get engaged and be a part of a lot of the decisions and recommendations. A lot of the boards and committees are advisory to the Select Board. We have some regulatory boards and committees as well, but I would recommend and encourage people in the community to check out the website, and if they are so inclined and want to volunteer their time and talents, fill out an application and be on one of the next committee interview panels.
Okay, so we dealt with an appointment to the EDIC and approved the appointment of Jim Fox in that position. We also had vacancies in the Board of Assessors, and that became a very critical need for us because the board wasn't able to have a quorum and wasn't able to act, and we have the setting of the tax rate coming up very soon. So it was really very important to fill those two positions, and thankfully, we had two very qualified individuals step up and offer their services. Both, at least, one of them is very well-known in the community, Joe Clancy. He's been around for many years and is a professional in the business of appraisals. And Ryan... Bruce Beardsley, I'm sorry, who has extensive experience as a member of the Board of Assessors in the town where he was previously.
And some real estate background, I believe, as well.
Yep, and then we had one appointment to the Historical Commission, Christopher Bucino, who is a landscape architect by trade and very well-qualified for the Historical Commission. We had, as Mike was alluding to, on the Commission on Substance Use, we had three very qualified individuals that sought appointment. We deferred any action because there's a move to increase the membership on that Substance Use Commission, because right now it's seven, and we had three qualified candidates for two positions. So the decision of the board was to hold off on any decision until we could deal with the request to expand the membership of the commission. Given what's going on in today's society, the commission is a very, very, very vital part of the town and the good work that they do, and it's great to have three people who want to be on that committee.
And that was a great discussion, and it was interesting to learn that there was actually at 1.9 members, and they backed it down to five and then increased it to seven. So I think, like you said, based upon the circumstances in the community, it certainly justifies, I feel, going back to them.
Mm-hmm. And then we had two reports, one from Jill Bishop from the Council on Aging, and one from Mr. Chase with respect to the Shellfish Advisory Committee. Again, many of you know the wonderful services that the Senior Center provides, that the Council on Aging is responsible for. Mike, you want to talk a little bit about how well we're doing there?
I want to talk about our director, Jill Bishop. Jill just does now, and her whole team, does an outstanding job. And Jill is outstanding when it comes to data and measuring success. And I forget the exact percentages, but the increase in membership has been significant over the past four years that they've been in operation.
Like 15% or 20% a year increase.
Yeah, 56%, I think, overall, the four years.
I think so, over those four years. I mean, people can't wait until their 60th birthday in town to be able to become members.
And the programming that Jill and her team put on, and always looking to expand that programming and adding some additional evening or late afternoon evening hours, I think Jill does an outstanding job. So we're fortunate to have her as part of the team.
So I am old enough to be a member, and I often get the emails from Jill, and I just happened to open it up this evening, and there are so many opportunities, so many physical fitness programs, and it's just an amazing job that she does and all of her staff do over there. And as Member Brown mentioned at the meeting the other night, he loves going to the café. I mean, and if you... You know, the deals at the café office are unbeatable here in town.
They do a great job. They do a great job.
Good food, good price.
And the facility is just a gem.
Yeah. What about the Shellfish Advisory? A lot of people, myself included, until early I came on the board, was not aware of how vibrant the shellfish industry is here in the town of Falmouth.
Yeah, vibrant is a good word, and as you know, and I think a lot of folks in the community know, it's becoming even more robust and more of an important part of our local economy, quite honestly. And Mr. Chase, the Chair, talked about how they provide advice and recommendations to our MES, Marine Environmental Services, who, as you know, is looking at a public-private partnership to even expand further our shellfish industry through public-private partnerships with local fishermen.
So as Mike said, all the committees that we have, some advisory, some regulatory, but we try to... we don't try. We get them in on an annual basis to give us their report, let us know what's going on. I think it's the hope of our Select Board going forward that these, as we evolve, these committees and their reports to the town will be more interactive questions and answers as opposed to just reading off a report. And last, the other night was a prime example of, you know, the report not being just a verbal report, but a real interactive type of report with questions and so.
And that's going to be important going forward, is that you have more of a dialogue, I feel, versus just an annual report where it's a one-way kind of communication. I think having that dialogue is healthy, and the more frequent touchpoints between the advisory committees and the Select Board is important.
And then we had a public hearing with respect to an application by Shipwreck. They do a wonderful job down there. They're very careful when they do do events down there. This one was for an after-party after the Falmouth and the Fall Road Race on November 2nd. There was a concern raised prior to the meeting with respect to some of the septic issues down by the Shipwreck, but we had a report from Mr. Renshaw. I'll let you tell us what the report was.
Sure, sure. And this has been being monitored. The situation with regards to Shipwreck's septic system has been being monitored since July, I believe. So we were aware of the issue. In effect, they're underway in repairing, replacing, I should say, their septic system with a more robust, modern system. In the meantime, what they're doing is having vehicles pump out the septic a couple, three times a day, and our Health Department has looked at it. Some of the other town departments have looked at it, and we're confident that they can meet the capacity and the needs, certainly for this event, because like I said, Bob, over July 4th holidays, and then the August Road Race, the big road race, we had no issues with regards to them pumping the septic. So we're confident that they have it under control.
Okay, so at that point, we went into the business section of our agenda, and the biggest issue was... well, one of the biggest issues was the recommendations with respect to town meeting. You want to just give a quick update on those?
Sure, sure. Each year, in advance, probably about a month, month and a half in advance of town meeting, Select Board is asked to vote the article recommendations, and that's exactly what the board did on Tuesday. Of the 24 articles in this November town meeting warrants, six of those articles were kind of under the purview or jurisdiction of the Select Board. So we reviewed those six articles with the Select Board, and as I recall, there's a lot of active lively discussion involving a couple of those, but the overall result was that all six of those were recommended to go forward.
Okay. Well, I think we're going to take a break at this point. We're going to come back, and we're going to talk about one of the articles, one of the items that was on our agenda, which had a little bit of an impact with respect to one of the articles that Mr. Renshaw just was mentioning, and that is the recommendation of the Police Station Advisory Committee with respect to a recommended site to the Select Board for the new, very much needed police station here in the town of Falmouth. So we're going to take a quick break, and we'll have two guests come on to give us a little bit of more of an update on how the committee came to its decision and the need for the police station. So, thank you. Okay, well, we are back from break, and I'm going to turn it over to Mike to introduce our guests.
Thank you, Bob. We're very pleased to have two very special guests tonight, Chief Jeff Laurie with Falmouth PD and Mr. Boyd DeMello, the Chair of the Public, of the Police Facility Advisory Committee. Chief, I want to start with you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit about, from your 30-plus years of experience, some of the characteristics you look for operationally when you start thinking about the sighting of a modern police facility?
So for that specific question, it's a great question, by the way. We're really looking for centrally located area. One is for you folks to be able to come in if you need services, police reports, interviews, whatever, but also operationally for the police officers, that when we have an arrest, if there's an issue at the station, if they have to deploy out to the road. And the site that we're looking at is very centrally located. It actually touches four of the five sectors in the town of Falmouth. So that's extremely important, that we're able to get to you folks in the time of crisis, and we're able to get back to the station when we're doing our reports or we have to book a detainee, things along those lines. And like I said, it's just very, very convenient in not having to deal, especially in the downtown area, with the congested traffic.
Thank you, Chief. You and your command staff, and I should have prefaced this by saying that this has been a huge effort over the past eight or nine months, right, since, I think, January, literally, when you started, you and your command staff began interacting and engaging with the advisory committee. Tell us a little bit about, again, using your background and experience, as we began meeting in January, February with the Owners Project Manager, the OPM, and the architect, Tekton. Tell us a little bit about what that process looked like. And then I want to turn it over to Boyd and kind of get his perspective. But in terms of the law enforcement input, can you kind of discuss how that looked?
Yeah, so it really started before I even took... I was on the payroll, identifying some of the weaknesses of the station. If I talked about, you know, at length, safety and health issues, you know, in the building. I used it as a team-building exercise. So we actually had the entire department involved into, what do we need for a 21st century policing facility? So it really was a team-building exercise. And then internally, we have our own internal group with Detective Tom McGuire, Deputy Chief Brian Loan, and Captain Doug DeCosta. Detective has construction experience. He was actually a teacher in that field. And Captain DeCosta, he's our accreditation manager, and we want to make sure we have a facility that meets accreditation standards moving forward. Right now, at the current station, it's very difficult. We're grandfathered in certain areas, but there are so many limitations. So it's important that we build a 21st century policing. And to do that, we need the input and support, not just from our police officers, but from all our civilian employees as well, whether it be in records, my administrative assistant, our clinicians, you know, our parking meter folks. You know, everyone's had a say into their areas of the station. To make this a station that is going to take us to the next 50 years.
And I think I'm just going to mention from the onset, the need for a new station has always been a commitment of the Select Board. When you came before us, I forget how long ago, but very early on in your tenure, and told us how important it was for the morale of the staff and for the health and safety of your officers and civilian staff, the Select Board has always been of the mind that a new station is absolutely necessary. And following up on that, the Select Board appointed, as we had with the fire station, a very well-qualified group of individuals to serve as the advisory for the sighting of the facility. And we turned to Boyd DeMello and asked him to chair the group. We had a couple of other individuals who are well-known in town and two retired police chiefs who certainly know what it takes to operate and cite a facility. So Boyd, you want to tell us a little bit about how the committee started out and the process they follow going forward?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Bob. First of all, I wouldn't do justice to where we are today without the dedication, support, and compassion of those folks on the committee and the overwhelming support that we've received from not only the Police Department, but the Department of Public Works, the Planning Department, and others in Town Hall that have assisted us to get through a very comprehensive batch of parcels to locate where we prefer to have this new police station cited currently.
And how many did we start with, and how did we get down to where we were, where we are?
If you... to be truthful about it, this process of identifying town parcels, whether it was for the police station, municipal use, housing, or parcels that maybe the town would want to move away from, started with the Planning Department with Jed Cornoch back in August of, I think, 2023, and then moved through some other various internal working groups within Town Hall, one of which I sit on the Land Use Group Committee. We took an in-depth look in August of 2024 at Jed's proposal, and then Jed was able to whittle that parcel number down to, you know, 22 or 16 parcels that he presented to the committee that fit the criteria that we were looking for to provide a police station for a size that they need now to work on. I mean, currently, they're jammed on a very small site. You know, there's expansion to that, and that's what we're looking at. And we got down to about 16 parcels that we spent a great deal of time on from January. I think we met almost every two weeks, and at some points, we're meeting weekly on parcel review and stuff and diving into deed restrictions and water resource protection areas and all those other dynamics, Article 97 parcels, and those things, and rejecting some outright due to their location, due to traffic flow, you know, traffic's a key component. Traffic flow is key to setting a new police station because our patrol officers have to respond out and back to the station, and you can't put them in a gridlocked area of town. So it's been a long process and one that I think every committee member has taken seriously, and we've rejected a few. We brought a few back over the course of time, maybe rejected them again, but we, you know, it wasn't just a quick, you know, throw the dart at the map and see where it landed type project that we had.
Now, I know from the presentation the other night, the consultants listed like 20 different characteristics that we were looking for. What were the main characteristics that we were focusing on as far as site and accessibility and things such as that?
Well, again, in Tekton and Veritex, our OPM, which I had the pleasure of working with Veritex and our Owners Project Manager, Steve Kirby, on the Hatchville Fire Station project. So there's a familiarity with Steve, and Steve's due diligence on breaking down those sites is incredible. I mean, I get emails from Steve at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. I don't know when the guy sleeps, but his drill down on the properties, so the things where we're looking for traffic location, locations to other municipal buildings and stuff, and just something centrally located in the town of Falmouth to, as the Chief pointed out, provide access to all the patrol districts or, you know, majority of the patrol districts in town, because again, time is of the essence when you're in emergency services.
I think utilities as well was one of the considerations.
Utilities, one. You know, the parcel that we're looking at now is the ability to tie into a sewer force main that's going to be installed in the current sewer project that the towns undertaking, and that was a big prerequisite for us for the site that we're looking at.
So just for the viewers, we're talking about a site on Brick Hill Road, and the one, it doesn't have a address or five... it does have a dress? I'm not quite sure, but it's directly across the street from where the new YMCA is going to be, and right on Brick Hill Road. And I think if you looked at a map of the town of Falmouth, Chief, and you put a pin there, it's pretty much centrally located as you think is one of the major components of a new station.
It's as perfect as perfect can get. And like, you know, we looked at over 500, I think close to 600 sites, and this one, it always rose to the surface. We looked, shied away from it for a little bit because we had concerns that were brought up at the Select Board meeting. However, we mitigated those concerns, and we feel very confident that that is the site for the next Falmouth Police Station.
And for a 21st century police facility, it's more than just a police station. It's a... it can be a community meeting place. You want to talk a little bit about what your thoughts are? And Boyd, if you want to talk about what the committee was looking at as far as size and so forth?
Absolutely. I'm very excited for this. You know, people have to realize, I realize as a Falmouth Police Academy in town, we train in the winter months because the summer, it's all hands on deck all summer. They have an academy in-service training. It's very difficult for us to get a classroom there for our own training. We're going to be able to host trainings in the new police headquarters facility with a 50-classroom capacity. Why I'm excited about that, I provide the venue, and then three, four, or five of our officers go to these trainings tuition-free. So there's a cost savings to the town. Besides that, exactly what you were saying, Mr. Chair, is this facility can be used... As you know, we're very big into community engagement at the Falmouth Police Department. I see movie nights for the kids. I see bingo for seniors and the kids. I see all kinds of programs, a Select Board meeting or other meetings. It could be used. It's a little bit bigger than your area, having 50 seats, and it's centrally located. It's in the center of town, so it's easy access for people to get to. So I'm very excited about that, having our own training facility. But I want everyone to know, this is going to be a community-based room. That's what 21st century policing is all about. It's about bringing the community to us, not just us going to you.
Okay. Brad, yeah?
Boyd, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's quite all right.
You wanted an answer.
So the site process, we got down to this site, and we're looking at it, and it's in a sensitive area that... and again, as the Chief mentioned, you know, we went back to it, we went away from it, and we're back to it. You know, the ability, again, as I stated, the ability to tie into the sewer system, the property, the stormwater runoff on the property is all going to be running into tight tanks. We're putting, we're proposing putting monitoring wells, more than one, as many as we need, along the backside and the sides of the property to, you know, get an early warning should there be, for whatever reason, some discharge onto the property. These monitoring wells are going to give the town the ability to catch it early, catch it quick. One of the other things we've discussed heavily, and it was in the process of selecting that site, is we're not going to clear... We're looking at about four and a half acres, five acres out of 101-acre parcel of land. We're not going to go in clear cut. We don't propose clear cutting five acres of land. We're going to work with the Parks Department and Jeremiah... I can't remember Jeremiah's last name, I'm sorry. But we're going to look at the parcel, and there's going to be a tree inventory and a study done, and you know, if there's any special trees in there and stuff, we're going to work around it and either move them or save them. And it's not a clear-cut, wide-open area.
One of the other things I wanted to mention, and this is a relatively new development, working with DPW, Boyd mentioned how involved they've been in the process. Peter McConner, our DPW Director, has recently taken a look at, in addition to the test wells, the monitor sites, and doing some additional stormwater treatment, the north side of the property, along Brick Hill, south side of Brick Hill Road, we're currently looking at, perhaps designing, using some Chapter 90 state funds to do some stormwater improvements along the south side of Brick Hill Road or north side of the property. So I know there's a lot of concerns because it is in a sensitive area near Long Pond, our primary freshwater drinking supply. But we feel these mitigating measures are... I'm very confident that we're going to be able to minimize any environmental impact to the pond. And I think it's exciting, this opportunity, to perhaps look at even improving from where we are currently by installing these stormwater BMPs, best management practices, along the south side of Brick Hill Road, the site facing the new proposed police facility, and actually leaving that area in a much better position than it is today.
That's a wonderful development.
Because right now, the water is sheeting off basically the site and right onto Brick Hill Road or the ditch and going into the pond and creating some issues. So I think this would be, provide an opportunity for us to address those impacts as well.
So from the process point of view, the recommendation has been made to the Select Board, which needs to decide the proper sighting. We were... it was on the agenda for a possible vote. There was some discussion about it the other evening. We've decided to defer the vote for the time being. And Mike, you want to tell a little bit about what we intend with respect to getting out to the community and explaining how we got here and hearing what people's concerns are and hopefully being able to address them?
Sure, sure. So the community input portion of this is hugely important. The Chief mentioned it, and Boyd did as well. So September 25th, we had our first community forum or meeting over at Lawrence School Auditorium. It wasn't super well-attended, but the folks that were there, I think 100% of them spoke in favor of the site, proposed site. But we felt like it was important, hearing comments and input from the Select Board of the past couple of board meetings, that we have another community forum, another community meeting. So October 28th is going to be our second, and hopefully hugely popular, and hopefully we have a lot of folks from the community come out and participate in that. We'll have the same general presentation. We're adding a couple of additional sites based on some of the feedback that we received from the Select Board and some of the... from the select board and some of the community members, so we'll be taking a look at a couple of additional sites. I don't want to give too much of that away, but again, the centralized location, the chief mentioned, that's been the focus, and unfortunately, the list of viable properties, when you look at centralized location, access to utilities, road visibility, the line of site issues, and topography, trying to minimize the site development costs as best as possible, that list of candidates becomes small. But we're doing our due diligence. A message was heard loud and clear to bring a couple of additional potential sites to look at, so we're going to have this community meeting on the 28th from 6:00 to 7:30 at Lawrence School. Hopefully, again, it'll be a good turnout of community members leading up to our November 3rd. I think that's the agenda that we're going to look to put this item back on the agenda for some more discussion and hopefully some consensus on the board.
Well, I think we'll wrap it up. I want to thank Boyd for being here this evening, and again, gratitude to the entire committee. You guys did a wonderful job, spent an awful lot of time, and did your homework and supported your recommendation, so we appreciate that.
We thank you for that, and you know, we're not done yet. We're back at it in the next morning.
You'll be there on the 28th, I'm sure.
We're at it, we'll see you all on the 28th.
Okay, and Chief, obviously, thank you for this and the wonderful job you do just day after day here, keeping the people in Falmouth safe, so thank you very much.
And on behalf of the department, I do want to recognize past board members and the current board members for their support on behalf of the Falmouth Police Department. You know, it's an honor to serve, and we really do feel supported.
Okay, well, I think we'll wrap it up. We'll be here again in two weeks to give another recap of the meeting before, so our next meeting is October?
27th.
27th?
October 27th.
Okay, so it might be a little tougher to be here on October 28th, then we'll have to adjust our schedule, but.
We'll have to adjust it.
All right, well, very good, but we will be back in two weeks, plus or minus. So thank you, thank FCTV again for the opportunity to give us this opportunity to get out the community, let you get a synopsis of what happened at the last select board meeting, so thank you.
Goodbye, Boyd.
Bye-bye.